If you would, please remain standing. Tonight, our invocation will be delivered by Pastor Mary Keys of the Bible Way Tabernacle Church here in Dillon, South Carolina. Pastor Keys, wherever you like to go from, up here, right there.
As we begin to bow out, Father God, in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, Father, it's again that we come before you, Father, to say thank you for another day that you have able us to see. And God, as we gather on tonight, God, just lead us here, God, to make wise decisions, God, we ask that, God, you lead them and guide them. Father, you said in all thy ways that we acknowledge you, that you will direct thy path. So, God, we ask that on tonight that you would direct them, God, in this leadership position, God, for our cities, our country, our county, God, that you were blessed, oh God, that they would make wise decisions, God, that is pleasing unto you, God. Father, we ask that you lead them and guide them, God, direct them, oh God, in the way that they should go, God. And we'll be ever grateful, God, to continue to give you all the praise, the honor, and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you very much. All right, the first item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, regular council meeting, November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving right on to the mayor's report. So I'd like to welcome everyone and Merry Christmas. I hope everyone's enjoying the Christmas season so far. Looks like it came around a lot quicker than I expected again. And here in the city of Dillon, it's been a really busy place with all of the Christmas activities. I hope everyone's had a chance to get out and enjoy some of this. The Christmas parade and tree lighting last week, those are probably my two favorites. And it was extremely well attended. Lots of people, especially at the parade, seemed like a bigger crowd than normal this year, Lisa, and the Christmas tree lighting, it was, it was just a great night. It was nice and cold, and the kids had a great time. But anyway, I hope everyone really enjoyed that, and those, like I said, are my favorite. We've also had a lot of other very well-attended events that are kind of around Christmas this year in the city of Dillon, and I'm only going to mention these just because not everybody knows that all this stuff is happening. But the senior Christmas launch out at the Wellness Center, the Shop Small at the Visitor Center, the Holiday Goodness Fair out at the Wellness Center, and of course, my kid's favorite, Breakfast with Santa, Glenn, last Saturday. They love going out there and having the snowball fight in the gym, and had some good pancakes and sausages. It was a really good event. And I know Glenn, Lisa, Rania, everyone involved to make these possible worked really hard, and I really want to say thank you. And I would encourage everyone to try to support these events, try to get out there. Your attendance is needed, you know, we're going to continue to do these, and we like to have a good crowd to show up. I know you've got children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren. It's a lot of fun, and a lot of time and effort goes into doing all these events for the citizens of not only the city of Dillon, but the surrounding community. But if you missed any of those, there's still time to make up because, Lisa, this weekend, we've got Holiday Market, we've got the Candy Cane Express, and I guess you'll talk about that a little bit. And also, I think you're having a movie out there. The Polar Express movie Saturday night. So anyway, that's going to be really nice. I thank everyone that helped out with all those Christmas activities. November was a really busy month in the city of Dillon. Again, I always say that because it seems like we're always, there's a lot going on. But we were able to host the Farm City Event out at the Wellness Center with several local growers in our community, and some outstanding 4H students were recognized. We were also able to plant a tree at the Wellness Center. Bert, thank you and your guys for doing that. We commemorated Arbor Day. And last week, you know, or I guess Saturday, was Pearl Harbor Day. And we had about thirteen guys came out here, and we did a little service, thank you for the wreath, Glenn, did a little service to commemorate Pearl Harbor Day, and said a little prayer right out here at Veterans Square. So that was, that was really nice, and those guys and family members that had some money in Pearl Harbor, really appreciated that. I think it's important that we honor those guys. So also, this past month, we were honored to have a couple visitors around town. And the first was Congressman Fries' office came and set up shop at the Visitor Center a couple weeks ago. And they set up shop so that they could hear from local citizens in the city of Dillon and the surrounding community. And several members of the community came in, and they visited with the congressman's representatives and presented their issues, and of course, the congressman will try to work on that. But I will say, it's really nice, Glenn, that we've got a facility that we can accommodate stuff like that. And when people that are not used to seeing that kind of atmosphere within the city, a nice, Lisa, a nice, a nice place where they can come in and meet with their congressman's representatives, and they're very impressed with that. So it's always good to have stuff like that. And I'd welcome anyone to stop by the Visitor Center. It's really nice. I mean, Lisa's done a lot to bring that place around. Couple Fridays ago, this chamber was bustling with activity. We had about forty kids from, I think they were tenth grade and eleventh grade class at Dillon High School came by. And we tried to keep them quiet because I know Mr. Ben and some of the others trying to do business in here. But they, they were very excited to be here, and of course, our city manager greeted them at the door, and they had a couple questions for him, and of course, he answered it and sent them all back here to the chambers. And back here in chambers, I guess, they stayed for about an hour. And we had Judge Berry, and we had Councilwoman Dawkins and Ms. Friedus. They were all in here, and myself, and we answered questions for what felt like about two hours, but I think it was about an hour. And then from here, we moved on over to the voter registration office, and they grilled Susie for a little bit down there about voter registration and how the machines work, and you wouldn't believe the questions. So just to spread the love around, we took them down to the county offices and let them have the turn at Tim Harper and Councilwoman Dawkins down there, and they had several questions. But I will say, the highlight of their tour ended at the city of Dillon Police Station, where Chief Lane and Officer Monroe Herring gave them a quick tour around. And then we, they had them all into your conference room in there, your training room in there. And wow, I thought they gave us some hard questions. They gave Officer Herring and Chief Lane. They really gave them some tough questions. So thank you guys for your patience, and it's really nice that we can, that we can get the kids to come out and do stuff like this. And I'll end with, I hope everyone will take some time to, over this Christmas holiday, to spend with family and friends. It's really a time to reflect and counter many blessings. You know, we're certainly blessed that we have friends, family, and community. And here in the city of Dillon, you know, I think that's all involved, and our community is our family, and our community is our friends. And we all seem to get along, and that's really special for me, and I really do appreciate that. And it, that's, that's what gives Dillon its charm and makes it a special place. And with that, you know, Pastor, I hope everyone will please remember the biggest blessing of all, and that is the birth of the child that was born, so with me all of them. That's, that's what I have for my report tonight. But before I finish, before I finish and leave tonight, I do want to recognize our friend, James Bogey Washington, fellow councilman. He's served the citizens of the city of Dillon since nineteen ninety-nine. That's twenty-five years of service, faithful service. We appreciate that. You know, for the last twenty-five years, you've been instrumental in many of the successes that the city of Dillon has seen. And the citizens of the city of Dillon are fortunate to have had you for twenty-five years. And I'm not saying you're moving on to better things, but you are moving on. Even though it is just across the street, you're not going to be able to get rid of us. We're going to come over there and visit you, and we hope you come to live with us. And I know over there, you'll do the same, you'll do the same for the citizens of Dillon County as you've done for the citizens of the city of Dillon. And I know you'll continue to be a champion for us over here and the citizens of the city of Dillon. But we do appreciate your service, and of course, we thank you for your guidance. We thank you for your service, and we thank you for your friendship. We're going to miss you. I'm especially going to miss you, sir. Before we go, we've got a little something for you. If you would, come up front here. I just don't know how to follow up with this.
It's hard, isn't it?
Yes, it's tough to follow that. In my letter that I wrote to you guys, it described what our schedule would be like at the city offices and things during the Christmas holiday. Again, gave you the date of our city employee luncheon, which is going to be February. Friday, December twentieth, beginning at eleven thirty at the Wellness Center. And then the offices will be closed the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. Then again, on January first, sanitation scheduled Tuesday, the twenty-third. We'll pick up our normal Tuesday route and also our Wednesday route on the twenty-third. No, I'm sorry, twenty-fourth.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so Tuesday's route is December twenty-fourth, but we'll also pick up Wednesday's route on the twenty-fourth. And then Thursday route on the twenty-sixth will be his normal route. And what about January first on New Year's Day?
We'll pick it up that day.
We will work on New Year's Day.
Yes, sir.
Only one day will we have a sanitation route that won't be picked up, and that will be Wednesday, which is Christmas, that will actually be picked up on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. Those folks will be notified next Wednesday with hangers on their trash cans, the little note that their trash.
Just curious, why would you choose to double up on the Christmas scene? Is it, is it a bigger route?
Bigger route.
Is it a bigger route?
Bigger route, yeah. That is correct. And then, you know, like I said, well, notification, one, we'll put on Facebook, and two, we have hangers that we put on trash cans of that route the week before, so they'll know. The Market Pavilion has now gone out for bid. It went out for bid on Friday through skebo. The bids will be due in two o'clock on January fifteenth. So we'll have some kind of idea of what that cost will be to start construction at the Market Pavilion. I found out probably two weeks ago, C funds, you know, that's the county transportation committee that does some paving. They're going to resurface South Railroad Avenue from Main Street to Hampton Street, and then from Hampton Street up to South First Avenue. So that'll be the two roads that will border two sides of that property where we're meeting, building the Market Pavilion. That will be done sometime in late November, I mean, late twenty-twenty-five or early twenty-twenty-six. So it could be done after, after we finish, or it could be done while we're, I don't know what timetable is going to be on the construction of the pavilion area, but that will be taken care of at no cost to the city. And then, you know, we went out for bid and awarded a contract to a engineering firm to do the Wellness Center master plan. They've been working on it. Should have some sort of presentation hopefully as early as January, this coming year, or no later than February, to give you some ideas what we can do on those forty acres directly behind the Wellness Center. Now, a good bit of that is wetlands, but there's some things that we still can do in the wetlands that is allowable. But they'll come back. Hopefully, it'd be nice if they're done and can present this to us in January. They sent me something this Friday, I believe it was, to look at, and everything that they put there, I'm in agreement with. So I think that doing that, that will shore it up, and hopefully, they can be here and I'll be in January to present you those ideas that they have on that project. And then the last thing I do have is, there's been discussions, I think, either Mr. Ill or Mr. David brought it up, about lighting at Martin Luther King and Radford Boulevard area. There's a little section there, I guess, off of Martin Luther King, where you can turn into the little strip mall or turn into the Roses area. It's kind of dark there. Duke Energy has finally decided that they can try to do something to put some lights there. Just because there's no poles. So they're going to look at doing some sort of design for us to look at. I mean, that's probably January, February before that's presented to us. That's all I have at this time, and as you see, Janet's not here tonight. She's out sick.
What was the money for the state?
Pardon?
What's happening with our downtown? Probably do a little report on that.
What portion?
Downtown revitalization.
Do we have money DCA received?
Correct.
That's, most of that money is going to be used towards the Market Pavilion area. As a right. Now, depending on what the bids come in, we've got a grant of two hundred and fifty, I believe it was, with CDDG, another two hundred from Southeast Crescent, which is a new grant that came out. So that's five fifty, and the projected cost was somewhere around eight hundred thousand to do what we're looking to do, so.
Don't we have like a million in that?
No. No?
Yeah. Don't look to ask the guy?
I doubt I don't know. Somewhere, from what I understand, a little over seven hundred thousand.
We need to do that, yeah. That's tax-free, boy.
A little over seven hundred grand, if I'm not mistaken. Because I don't know what they spent on the landscape architect, architecture work that they started. I'm not sure what was spent there, how much that was.
We got a lot of paperwork out of that.
Yeah, and then there's.
Did you find out how much they got for sure?
Yeah, we will. Then there's the signs.
That was thirty-five thousand.
Trying to think what else they spent money on.
The Visitor Center?
Yeah, and some of that money they had went towards the Visitor Center renovation.
Center planners?
Yeah.
Parkin Islands.
Parkin Islands, yeah, they paid for that. That was, I can't remember now, a hundred thousand?
One seventy, I think.
Okay, so almost two hundred grand to take out those, or take that one out. So that's somewhere around, if I'm not mistaken. Pardon?
They have to chuck those trees in.
But somewhere around seven hundred thousand, give or take.
If we're going to just put that for corner landscaping?
Could be. Could be. Again, it all depends on what the market would be and the cost comes in. And what we want to do there.
So since we already voted that in way back, we'll be able to fast track on that if it happens.
Could be. That is correct. Just saying, as you see, Janet's not here tonight. I can answer some questions if you got any for finance questions.
How much money do we allot for the, to pick up the difference from the money that they got through ARP money? I mean, are we going to have to take any ARP money to finish up the Market Pavilion?
No, 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 no.
That's going to cover all that cost?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And Market Pavilion, I mean, the ARP funds, we pretty much exhausted those, you know, through our last meeting.
Making any headway on getting the products done that we've allotted money to?
Yeah, I think. We're waiting on the roof at the Visitor Center. We've got an agreement signed with the lowest bidder there on replacing the roof. Fire truck was ordered last week. Generator work, the generator was ordered. Doing the wiring, we're ordering, we're getting the materials, right, David? And then we'll bid out the actual installation.
What we have to do, replace the pump or nothing?
Pretty much, pretty much.
And we got a ton of cost for that?
No.
Now, you said generator, you mean?
Generator for the new police department.
How long will it take to get your new fire truck?
Probably four months.
Four months, yeah. How about the pumps?
Pumps, saw the water pumps.
That's not in none of this money.
Well, I just got a question. We've got general fund all cash accounts down about a million dollars. What's that about, top line?
I said I could answer some. We had one point nine million in November of last year. This year, we've got nine hundred and forty. Let's see what she says in her notes there. And then if you look at total, all cash accounts, a four million this November, four point four million last year, we're about four hundred thousand difference, yeah. So I don't know that I can answer that, but we'll find out what that difference is, roughly a million dollars. And that may be, again, there was some of these state appropriation monies that we have gotten November of last year.
She says that in order to, that we're waiting on four million there, and now we're.
Well, that, when the water and sewer is FEMA money that were, not a FEMA, EDA funds. Where we had on the number nine bridge, putting the sewer line under the river, taking it off the old bridge. And we spent our money upfront. They reimburse us. So we're waiting on that money to be reimbursed that we've spent.
We got that money.
Yeah.
Also, solid, well, we have like one point four and fifty percent margin.
Yes, yeah, and the next biggest thing we have is roughly two hundred and forty thousand that will come out sometime in January to make our last payment of the Wellness Center.
We gotta have some kind of a bid.
Burn that mortgage note.
Burn the mortgage note, yeah. We got an idea how much our, how much the AC units are going to cost, though.
Somewhere, the ones, we have four larger, the four largest units sit on top of the gymnasium. They're probably looking at thirty-five thousand a piece. And those, we know two needs to be replaced, but I think we need to replace all four. Yeah. You know, and that's just a rough cost. Once you bid it out, it may be cheaper than thirty-five or so. And what one would be if you get forward. Any other questions on finance? That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Louie?
I often wonder when I watch a conductor doing his arms, is he really necessary? You know, does he really need to be acting like that?
Only if someone's watching.
Well, exactly. Now, I bring this up because this past tree lighting parade, the two conductors of the event weren't there. Johnny Morris, because of the situation with her husband, was unable to be there to orchestrate what she had planned and organized. But I did want to thank David Longager for stepping up and managing all that. I was unable to be there. It's the first time I've not been at an event in thirty years. Just, it just didn't work out for me. But I did want to thank my husband, who stepped up and was that elf, managed the children, public works, of course, for always doing everything that they do. And Glenn and everybody that pulled together to make that possible for the community. I did get the picture when the tree lit, and it brought tears to my eyes. It was beautiful. It is truly a beautiful tree. It's wonderful to drive through right now and see the way that downtown looks. We were able to purchase brand new banners for downtown, if you haven't noticed them, Merry Christmas from the city of Dillon. And then we were able to purchase, I think, fourteen, twelve or fourteen Snowburst that are now at South Plaza where we've never had decorations before. So that is the money that was raised from the visitor guide, which hopefully will go to print very soon. And it's complete, it just needs to go to print. But anyway, there were a lot of people that came together to prove that sometimes a good address is not absolutely necessary. But they did an amazing job, and I think everybody truly enjoyed it. Made a few changes to it this year, and I often wonder, could you change it to five thirty? Because every year, that train is going to be a part of our event. But I don't think it's, we're able to do that with the lighting downtown, to change it to five thirty to six thirty, anything like that. So the train will always deal with. Speaking of the train, Amtrak station, I've been in touch this afternoon with Amtrak quite a bit. Their ADA accessible ramping and design that they're going to be working on soon was pushed back a couple of weeks, but they should be starting that probably right about the beginning, end of December, beginning of January. I was on the phone today with a woman that really wanted to go on the Candy Cane Express. She couldn't get on the train. Couldn't figure out, can't get it from Florence to come through Dillon Stop. You know, it's just, it just doesn't work that way. But I told her that next year, we will have a very different conversation, and she will be able to get on the train and enjoy it with her family. You have to go to Florence if you want ADA accessibility for the Amtrak. There's not a lift here or any way to get anybody on the train. And she is wheelchair-bound, so she has to make arrangements to travel Amtrak from Florence. So if you were disabled to some capacity, you know, they will assist you getting on a little bit. If you have a walker, I've seen them do it. But a full-on wheelchair, there's no way to get anybody on the train here.
Now, they used to have a mechanism. They must have got rid of it.
Yeah, it's not available, and we weren't able to get this. Anyway, next year, she's going to be on the train. I'm looking forward to the updates that they're going to do. There will be some things in the bathroom as well, so I think that'll be a nice addition to all the things that I hope will be going on around January and February. There's some buzz about some of the buildings being under contract now downtown, and some plans are kind of being made that will be hopefully happening around that time. I know that the one oh one, the one hundred, one oh two, and one oh four, Todd's buildings, are being rented out now for a coffee shop and a thrift store. And I think that lease goes until about August, and then there'll be either a renewal or I know some investors are interested in the building. So I think we're just on the cusp for something happening. It really is, I said, three to five years. It's been three and a half. So we are having our market analysis presentation tomorrow. It starts at eleven o'clock until two. We do have a few seats left, if anybody can join us. Alyssa Richardson will be there from Develop, South Carolina. Kathleen Rose from Rose and Associates will be there also. And one of their Chamber of Commerce representatives.
Freesom?
Gillian, yeah.
Gillian.
Gillian will be joining us as well. And although Main Street, South Carolina wasn't able to join us for the update, for the presentation, once we get the details from the market analysis and the complete version of it, they are exploring a transformation workshop case study during one of next year's quarterly trainings with Dillon as the example. So by the time they do this, the Amtrak, and hopefully, some buildings will be renovated. It'll all kind of be happening at the same time. The Pavilion will be kind of started. So there's going to be this huge flux of activity at the beginning next year. It's pretty exciting. But it's also nice to know that people are actually seeing what we're doing and planning ahead for part of this to make an example of us. So I thought that was, that was pretty exciting. We will be hosting one of the Main Street, South Carolina quarterly meetings next year in September. We'll do it at the Visitor Center, and hopefully, there'll be, you know, a lot of things going on for them to view and visit when they get here. So that's pretty exciting. But I did want to, once again, thank everybody for their help with the tree lighting and the parade this weekend. I've been on the phone with Amtrak again, trying to get thirty more seats because of the demand, which I was that demand for a hundred and twenty seats. They jacked up prices because of the analog they've got. And instead of nine dollars one way, it was forty dollars one that way. And I've been on the phone with customer service, Karen Felder, who's a wonderful person, to see if we can't just get thirty more seats at the normal price. Because I am not the normal population. Everybody's trying to go to Fayetteville. But we have a hundred and twenty people that will be traveling with us. We've got two cars, complete cars. We'll have an elf on each one, snow and all kinds of stuff before they get on, a market to shop. They'll have about an hour stand till when they get to Fayetteville, shopping and eating. And then we'll come back for pizza, and then the Polar Express, which the Polar Express is open to the community, invite children to come, or parents in their onesies if they want to, and enjoy the movie, which will be free. Not a while to see your onesie. You never know. I saw that look. But the Christmas market, we have about five vendors inside. We have, one of our artists will be doing a free craft with the children, and just some Christmas shopping for people to come down and enjoy it. Signature Event Rentals always loans us that beautiful chair that I would love for the city to own, so I'm working on that one. But anyway, we borrowed it for the time being, and we'll have that back out. If anybody wants to come take Christmas pictures in front of the tree on the fourteenth, it's a nice way to get the family around this beautiful chair with the reindeers with the Christmas tree behind. And that'll be out there pretty much from about ten AM until probably about six o'clock at night. So come on down to the front or the South Plaza and get your picture.
Alyssa, so, so a couple of things. So that train, just tell them briefly about the demand that you experienced with those cars. So you got one car and it sold out the first day.
Yeah, I mean, within hours.
And you think you could fill a total of four?
Well, I, I had been on the phone, after the first one filled so quickly, I, the next day I called, booked another one. It went up about fifteen dollars. They have a new analog, like I said, that they're using now, kind of like airplanes. The fans higher, the price goes up, it's the first time they've tried to use it. Shouldn't be for group reservations, which was kind of the conversation I was having with our governmental liaison today, but. Um, second one, I came in on a Saturday and spent about five hours going through a list of a hundred and two, um, people that had called or come by, um, and, and I had so many phone calls, I had to literally take pictures of the phone numbers, print them off and just start calling them. And based on the emails we got too. So we, we managed to the best that we could. Next year we'll either use Eventbrite or either We Shop, South Carolina, to, to the reservations instead of trying to manage, it was just too much. So second car was completely booked with a hundred and twenty total people as of Saturday, which was the second day that we did that. And I still have a list over a hundred that still want to go, if I can still get the third car. Uh, when I, when they denied me, it was because, um, the demand. But once again, I was just, it's, it's, they don't have the kinks worked out without one yet. So hopefully I can get thirty more seats. But originally they wanted to charge me eighteen hundred dollars for thirty seats, where it was like nine hundred and fifty-two for sixty seats. So I'm like, what are you talking about? And if you went on there, you could actually see how they had up the price to forty dollars one way as opposed to six to nine. And, um, so next year we'll do two dates, we'll probably do a total of four cars, if not a total of six. Um, the city has not endured any cost with this, we've made enough to cover all the expenses. I am not making hot chocolate for a hundred and twenty people, so traveling times will be there again like they were for the tree lighting. And, um, so, yeah, it's all just been an even wash and it'll be an amazing time for the community. But I do want to tell people if they're watching, that you can hop on that train, Monday through Sunday, any day of the month, any day of the week, and go to Fayetteville. And go to a lot of really cool places, I've traveled the whole country on the train, it's a lot of fun. Um, a couple that, that are dating, either probably in their seventies, came in and had me make a reservation for them so they could go the next weekend. Um, so it's a lot of people that are interested. I am hoping that one day that Dillon will be the destination that Fayetteville is giving to us right now, that will come to us and want to do kind of a Polar Express thing as opposed to having to take people out and understand what's happening here, we're going away. Um, but one day we'll bring them into this kind of effect. I feel sure of that.
Thank you for all that. And, and thank you for the efforts you guys did, you and Johnny did with the parade and the tree lighting. If y'all hadn't had such a good plan, it couldn't have gone off like that. And Glenn, uh, we, we started about five minutes late to light the tree. And her husband called, or she called her husband.
I'm calling, I'm like, where's the tree at?
I could hear her across the phone, tell him not to light that tree.
I'm watching, it's not lit, I'm sorry.
Anyway, thank you.
But, yeah.
He hasn't done the countdown at that point.
Well, he was busy out there watching the, you know, anyway, but yeah, we, we got it lit.
All right, moving right along, citizens report. Anyone have anything for us tonight? Nothing at all. All right, moving into old business. We don't have any old business, but we do have a little bit of new business. And that is to accept the donation of land tax map zero five nine dash ten dash twenty-six dash zero zero four. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Glenn, you wanna talk briefly about that?
I can, and then, um, this past one will follow up. This is a property that we tore down, that was condemned, that we used ARP funds for about a year ago. Um, we'll bid it out eighteen or nineteen projects, that's, this is one of them. Total cost, when it was all said and done, was two hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, for that one particular project. We've reached out to the, the property owners, said, all right, here's what the final cost is. You're on the hook, just like we've done all of the properties, rates of dollars, whatever it was for. You have one or two options, you can pay us in full, or we can work out some agreement over a period of time. And, you know, if you don't do any of those, we'll actually turn it over and put a lien on the property. So they decided they wanted to donate the property to the city. And the city can do whatever shall with, should with it if we want. Now, lawyer, she can follow up with what she thinks we need to do as far as it being...
Okay. Well, I went ahead after I got the packet and confirmed that the corporation, when you're dealing with an entity other than an individual, a LLC or a corp, there's certain additional things you have to do. I verified that the corporation is in good standing with the Secretary of State. But I think we would need at least a lien and judgment check to make sure there's nothing that's attached to the property as well as I will have to work with, um, the corporate officers to make sure we have the proper corporate documents. So we know who has authority to sign for the corp.
Is there any de-heck issues there at the park?
Not there at all.
Have there ever been any, um, gas tanks there? Is anyone aware of any gas tanks, underground tanks, anything like that?
I don't think so.
They had to wear full outfits to move.
It was an old tobacco warehouse is what it was. In winter, got you in, took the oven store cotton there.
Usually we only run into de-heck with the gas stations, if there's been a gas pump or a tank there. It is a very big issue, but, uh, when you run into it.
Asbestos, asbestos.
Attorneys, asbestos isn't on our radar.
Burden concrete's still sitting there.
No, sir, that was, that was part of the major conflict.
Took all that out.
He had, he was taking that out.
I'm just curious, what kind of, what can we do with the property?
They have a parking lot.
Well, the Public Works apartment needs it. I mean, we're, you know, we've been a growing department and we've run out of room and it's right across from our shop and it's on higher ground also. So when we had storms, we'll be able to move our equipment across the street instead of having to move it all the way out to the wellness center. So it, it'd be a good benefit for the city.
They still don't know what's in there? If we take...
No, they wouldn't know what's in there if that's what you agreed to. I mean, I mean, is the property worth?
No, it's not worth nothing.
Now, when we started, when they agreed and we started to tear it down, it was the price tag on it.
It was around sixty grand and then de-heck, yeah. Well, what we bid it on, what everything was bid it on was take the proper, take the shell down, build it, the structure. Once it came down, de-heck came back in, because the contractor had to get de-heck permits. And once it was taken down, de-heck came back in and said, you're not finished. What else we gotta do? We gotta take up this concrete. That was about two hundred thousand dollars, because they said the concrete sits, portion of the building had collapsed. There was something to do with asbestos and being on the concrete. Doesn't make sense, but they had to take the concrete out, so that cost was a whole lot more than taking the building down.
And somebody could take it down, Dillon was getting out of that?
No, I mean, we didn't bid, we didn't bid, we didn't have any foundations taken out of anything that we tore down.
Well, that's the reason I mentioned de-heck, because I remember, that's going through that, I just definitely, there's no... They weren't given a clean bill of health for the property, they had to, as we finished the job.
Until we finished, we had to finish that job.
I got you.
Because they came back and said...
Return on your investment.
Oh, no.
Car vehicles down there for a cost of two hundred and fifty thousand.
But you'll, you'll never get that two, and remember now, you'll never get that two hundred and fifty thousand if they went on lien on the property. Uh, because one, nobody's gonna buy it. Two...
Right on the river.
Yeah, ain't nobody gonna buy it. Two, as you remember, we ended up getting a piece of property that we had a lien on for forty thousand, that we had to get money back on it. Um, as it went through the, uh, Fortune Commission, a Fortune Commission. You know, we ended up getting it, but we're still at forty grand, be the same thing if it would be out.
You see more property owners coming back to us and doing the same thing?
We, we have some that have signed an agreement with us, but they're not two hundred thousand plus. See, I mean, you're talking ten, fifteen thousand, seven, five or six thousand. Um, you know, in the six digits. But that would be the only one that was in the six digits.
This is one of our biggest projects, it's costly.
Yeah, because everything else was, well, during the bid process or once we accepted those bids on it, this one and round property was the two highest, forty-five to fifty-five thousand. And then everything else was about twenty thousand and below. And that's the reason we didn't do the round property, because they told us we'd had to take out cement pad there too. And why'd I want to spend another two hundred thousand when everything structurally at round property is already gone anyway?
Any more discussion? All right, I'm in favor. All right, Council members report. Let's start on the end down here, Councilman Allen.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna go back to, uh, the finance right past.
Yes, sir.
Um, was this a match for the market analysis that you took the money out of the hospital?
No, that's straight money out of the hospital.
And the also, the Bolton and Mink master plant also?
That's who we paid.
Okay.
There was like sixty-some odd thousand, I think, is what it would be, it was a hundred and four.
Um, the condemned building that we passed the owners a couple of months ago, the big old motelers condemned out here on Rat and Bull Walk. Have we sent out a certified letter to them to let them know that they gotta bring their property up to court? So where are we at as far as that process to...
None of the new ordinance, we're gonna have to redo the entire process. Um, because now we had to add some language into ordinance where as to we have an option of whether we want to turn the building down or find the owner, uh, per day. So with that change of ordinance, I'll have to actually start the entire process over.
When will you begin the change of owners back to us?
Right now I'm working on the vacant building ordinances and, um, probably by Friday or next week I can start on the, uh, the unsafe ordinances.
Okay. Um, the mural, had a lot of people speak to me about the mural, the train mural, it's, it's awesome. I would like to know if there's any way that we can, is it crank mur?
I saw that today, they'll do a block in.
Yeah, they're blocking, is some way to light it up. I mean, they got a light here, I guess, have y'all seen it, the pictures, is that like we could turn that light around and see where?
Maybe they'll do that.
But coming across the railroad tracks, you can't see it because of the crank mur. Um, and I just want to know if it's possible we could, I'd hate to, you know, I hate to come down that long. But, uh, so we can see it from every side.
These are, these are off the, off behind the side.
At one time they were planning it to hide that condemned building at one time, so...
If somebody, or y'all can look at that and see if we can do anything to spruce it out a little bit better?
Now, uh, let me tell you this, and shit, but I'm trying to be as transparent as I can. That property had a lien on it that we tore down, but they paid that lien, or they paid that cost less than a month ago.
Oh, did they?
So hopefully they don't, they'll turn them back.
Why? But they did pay, they did.
They did pay, which was about fifty grand if I remember correctly, they, they did pay that about a month ago.
Was Madison up for sale?
I don't know.
Madison?
Yeah, Madison State, they did pay, so, you know, thank them for that.
You know, it's kind of bad that it took us, I know years to get it tore down. But within a day or two, they come and pay it and retain it. But it was a hassle for years.
But we didn't get our money back for that.
We reached out to them, so we kind of...
Oh, yeah.
That's all I got for you.
Councilman David?
Um, I appreciate you reaching out, Glenn, on the lighting, Bradford and Marklet King. Seen to be, uh, had some unusual calls on that one, and I'm sure they'd be appreciative of you doing that. Little thing I, I mentioned, I mentioned a couple of times, the hedges in front of Dollar General, the new building. Is there any way possible we might could do some of those? I mentioned it before.
Those, those were put in by movie theater. If, if it was a movie theater?
Yes, sir.
And they had a permit through DOT, because it's on DOT guidelines. Unless DOT gives us permission, we can't touch it.
Well, they sure look bad. Is there anything, can we get the property owner, the Dollar General, to clean them up and shake them?
We might do that.
Because they had a terrible shed, it's full of garbage.
And since...
It was not.
Pardon?
Yeah, I think they need to be, I think they need to be taking other.
And being that it's been change of ownership, there may be something, now I'll check with DOT.
Please check with, you know, um, you mentioned the hairy round property. Is there any, do you have any thought of what investment, any possible way it'd be too expensive to tie it with?
I have no idea.
Have you heard anything from that family at all?
Is that, the brother doesn't have anything to do with that, it's the son, it's, uh, we have...
Now, we still, I mean, there's money due on that property, ails of us, right?
Not mine, no.
Not ours, no. Now, de-heck did go in there and do a cleanup job also?
We had a grant many years ago, federal Bransfield grant, that paid to, to go in and clean up any hazardous material. I, he had some large power transformer laying on the ground that...
Had leaked.
That had leaked, and that's what that grant did, was came in and cleaned that up, but that's it.
So since it's a grant, it's not a lien, put back on the property?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
That's all I got, man.
All right, thank you. Councilman Washington?
I did not say that, my pleasure, working all y'all up here, hang on. Uh, we, uh, went to some town and my gift now, looking good over there, causing the lights, sidewalk and all, that y'all hitting wood. And so I just want to appreciate, I appreciate what you're doing. There you go, thinking of hiding down over there, got one more to do.
Yes, sir.
So I got you.
Thank you. Councilman Wallace? Councilman Jackson?
Glenn, you got the light down there. Now, how about the lights on Main Street that I've been talking about for a year?
They're messing with those as well.
Because it is dark on Main Street.
Well, I have a question.
It's terrible to come into the city and...
I have requested them to change everything on Main Street from Eighth Avenue back to Fifty-Sixth to LED. And they just have not changed it.
They need to add a couple here, because some of them, some of them is in the middle of a block and nothing on the corner. And you would think the lights would be on the corners, so, but, uh... But I'll say, I want to thank Bobby for all the years. Me and Bobby came home together in ninety-nine, so now that leaves me and Dr. Wallace as the seniors.
With Dr. Wallace definitely being the senior.
What year did you go home?
Ninety-five.
I was, I was finishing up a two-year term for Craig. When he can become mayor. But that's all I have.
All right, thank you for that. Yes, sir.
What about, you know, the lights coming into the town from the Harbor Freight side? Is there any popular way we can talk to Duke Energy about that?
We had talked to them, you know, what, two or three years ago, and they told me they would do something after QT was built.
Right.
And I'll follow back to them.
Talking about the exit?
Well, no.
Even up that, up that exit needs something too, because hey...
Now, the exit's not in the city.
Okay, it's not, but it would be nice if the county, somebody could do it, because, I mean, I've been getting out that exit forever. And if you don't watch it, you, you will miss that exit. And, uh, I mean, this is...
Staring at Harbor Freight.
But it is, yeah, I mean, it is really, really dark coming up that exit. So I don't know if the county could request something or, uh, anyway.
All right, anything else, guys?
Well, the rounds property, we've been talking about this for a while, and I'm kind of, maybe I missed something. Uh, I know the old man died, I don't know if Larry, is he out in front?
Who's Larry?
Larry's...
He has a property.
What did, how did you, I mean, is... How do you, I mean, it's been an ice storm for many, many years. How do we get it to where they'll just donate the property? They're never going to use the property.
They haven't donated the property.
Donate the property off. Somehow the city can get the property. They can purchase it with a little bit of money or something to clean the area up now to where they can eventually have a park on that side of town. I know Bobby's missing it many.
If y'all want to buy it, tell me how much you want to offer and.
Well, my thing, I mean, I think it's time to clean it up. I think it's time to, let's move with it and get something done. I think it's, I think Larry would be more accommodable to entertain the conversation. I really do. Because I would like to see a park over there on that side of town eventually one day. And maybe when he gets on the county, we can correlate together and get that done. But, you know, I know it's talked about for many, many years. I just don't know what the disconnect is. I know Harry, old man Harry, you know, he sat on it because he was old timer and everything, didn't want to do anything. But now, since he's passed away, maybe Larry might entertain the conversation and want to try to do something for him.
We can reach out and see.
Anything else? All right, what we'll do now is if Mr. Benny will close us out in prayer and then, guys, we're going to move to executive session. We'll wait till after prayer and vote into executive session. And then after executive session, we will come out and Mayor may not take him out.
Our Father, who art in heaven, dear Lord God, we thank you for your many blessings bestowed upon the city of Dillon. Dear Lord God, we thank you for your presence and guidance in this meeting on tonight. Dear Lord God, we ask that you continuously bless our mayor, city council, city manager, our city attorney and all the department heads on tonight as we continuously make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And we pray in everything we do we be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise. For us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.